Our 6.4, 9:15 a.m. item is consideration of presentation on the California Department of Insurance Overview and Safer from Wildfire Framework. And I'm glad to see we've got some people in the chambers today. I, oh, there she is. Okay. I reached out to the Department of Insurance so that we could have this conversation about what's happening at the state level and then have the opportunity for them to hear some feedback about what's happening locally. So I'm going to pass this off to, how do you pronounce your name?
Duriya Sayed.
Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. What a wonderful thing to start a day with you, with pleasure allegiance, with, you know, honoring Gail and with seeing all the cute puppies. You guys have already made my day. So thank you for the invitation to join you today. My name is Duriya Sayed, as said earlier, and I serve as an outreach analyst in the Department of Insurance. Department of Insurance is Community Relation and Outreach Branch. It is also my honor to introduce you to Lisa Strange, our manager for Northern California Community Relations and Outreach Branch, who is here with us, also helping me with slides and will join me for Q and A. I'm happy to be with all of you today, to share with you an overview of our department, to give an update on the nation's first wildfire safety regulations, which is intended to help drive down cost of insurance. Thank you for sending me your questions and concerns. We will try and address those here today for you as well. So as I said, I will start with the overview of the department. Currently, the Insurance Commissioner is Ricardo Lara. Under his direction, the department uses its authority to protect Californians from insurance rates that are excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. This is what we regulate. Make sure, the department makes sure that the insurance companies have enough funds to pay the claims. We set standards for agents and brokers licensing, perform market conduct reviews of insurance companies, ensuring they are compliant and in good standing. We resolve consumer complaint, and we will talk about it, about consumer complaints again and again, about our hotline number, going on our website, and filing a complaint with us, and we resolve that, we work with you on that. Insurance policies are difficult thing to go through, so we want, if you want ever to review it, we are there. So we do all that part, and also investigate and prosecute insurance fraud. We have over 300 law enforcement officers helping us in this regard. But the only one thing we cannot do, one thing we cannot do however, is to require or compel insurance companies to sell insurance to a particular person or community. That's one thing the department cannot do. Once the companies are doing business, we regulate them, but we cannot make them do business. So California devastating wildfires are called to action. We are using every tool available to improve insurance for Californians. The Insurance Commissioner had us get out of our offices and get out to meet with you, virtually and also in person. So the Department of Insurance worked with the state's emergency response and preparedness agencies, including CAL FIRE and the Governor Office of Emergency Services, to create a list of actions you can take to protect yourself from wildfires. And we call it Safer from Wildfires, or you will hear SFW, Safer from Wildfires. So we have been asked a lot of time, there is sources available for those who cannot obtain afford insurance. The answer is that this is actually a step in a direction to make insurance affordable and available to the insurers. Insurance Commissioner Lara has directed insurance companies to provide discounts to consumers under our new Safer from Wildfire SFW framework with transparency about risk rating. The regulations requires insurance companies to submit new rates that recognize the benefit of safety measures such as upgraded roof and windows, defensible space, and community-wide programs. These programs include Firewise USA and the Fire Risk Reduction Community designation developed by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. So just in April, insurance companies made it, insurance companies submitted their insurance rates to CDI for review. This is a top priority for Commissioner Lara and the department. And the department is reviewing these new rates right now. To your questions, what can homeowners do to reduce their rates that is within the homeowner's control? We are urging communities and homeowners to take advantage of this timeframe to harden their homes and communities. Let's talk about the mitigation requirements first. Step one, protect the structure. Thank you, Lisa. Protect the structure. Protect the structure is pretty straightforward. Class A fire-rated roof, enclosed eaves, fire-resistant vents, multi-pane windows, and a minimum of six-inch non-combustible vertical clearance at the bottom of the exterior surface of the structure. I know all of you know in this meeting are familiar with the best practices. Step two, protect the immediate surroundings, which is clearing of vegetation and debris from under decks, clearing of vegetation debris, mulch, stored combustible items, and any and all movable combustible materials from within five feet of the building being evaluated. And when we say building being evaluated, you will hear the term BBE. Incorporation of only non-combustible materials into that portion of any improvements to the property of BBE, which is situated within five feet of BBE. And number four, this gets little trickier though, the removal of combustible structures, sheds, and other outbuildings from the immediate surroundings of the home, to at least a distance of 30 feet. Is the 30 feet from the property line? What if the neighbor's property is closer than 30 feet? Will the homeowner still receive a discount? It is 30 feet from the building being evaluated. The term "building being evaluated" is the residential or commercial structure in question, and includes decks that are attached or adjacent to the structure. In the event that the applicant or insurer does not control the entirety of the area extending 30 feet from the building being evaluated, removal of combustible structures from as much of such areas as is under the control of the applicant or policyholder is advised right then. From the purpose of this regulation, the property being evaluated should comply with Public Resource Code, Section 4291, and any applicable local ordinance governing defensible space. So who will be evaluating defensible space? Requirements are being met by the homeowner. Inspections can be done with existing tools, and most inspection can be done remotely. Insurance companies currently use technology like satellites, drone images, or uploaded photos from the property owners, actually. And remember, if there's any dispute on the facts, the department's staff is here to help. Now let's look at the community part. And that's our step three. Step three of the Safer from Wildfire framework is an effort to obtain a community-level mitigation designation. This will most likely involve at least one, if not more, local government agencies, fire, emergency services, planning, etc. Community-level medication designates include FRRC by the Board of Forestry, I talked earlier, PRC Section 4290.1, and Firewise USA site in good standing. So Firewise that you have in good standing. You may know that the Firewise program is nationwide program created by the National Fire Protection Association. Currently, I'm happy to report that California has more than 500 Firewise USA communities with more forming, and it is an important part of California's effort to ensure communities are prepared against wildfire. So CAL FIRE's Office of the State Fire Marshal's New Community Wildfire Preparedness and Mitigation Division works to assist local communities in receiving this designation. If your community is interested in this, we will put the link to become a Firewise community in the chat. Currently, some insurers are offering discounts for both community mitigation and property parcel mitigation. Others are only offering discounts for community mitigation, and yet others for only property parcel mitigation. At this point, we want to encourage you to visit our website to see the list of insurers currently offering discounts. So that link is on our website, and we want you to go and look at that link. The other thing is, we do not yet know that what new discounts will look like. As I mentioned earlier, we have just received the new rates just about a month ago, submitted by the insurance, little bit over a month ago, submitted by insurance companies to CDI for approval. However, every action under Safer from Wildfires will qualify for an insurance discount. By doing more, you can save more. So again, I will reiterate, class A fire-rated roof, five-foot ember-resistant zone around the structure, non-combustible six inches at the bottom of walls, ember and fire-resistant vents, double-pane windows or added shutters, enclosed eaves, cleared vegetations and debris from under decks, move sheds and outbuildings, as I said earlier, at least 30 feet away, trim trees and remove brush in compliance with state and local defensible space laws. Neighborhood can form a Firewise USA community, and cities and counties and local district can become certified as a fire risk reduction community also. And as was doing this presentation with other, somebody else, I, we also noticed that, and I want to point that out, that Fire Risk Reduction Community does this certification every other year. So now they will be doing in 2024, in case you are interested in that. So along with discounts, transparency is very important benefit of commercial Lara's new regulations. We have met with thousands of Californians, and most people do not know that insurance companies assign a risk code to your home or business. People are hungry for this information because of, because if you know about the risk on your property, you can take action to reduce them and make yourself and your neighbors safer. So as I said earlier also, that Commissioner Lara is using every tool at his disposal to protect consumers and get them the best value. When we are talking about best value means affordable and available. Voters established this process more than 30 years ago, which is critical to our job of making sure Californians have the most choices for property insurance possible. Under the rules passed by voters, every rate filing is published on the Department of Insurance website, and anyone can see it. So again, if you go on our website, you can see that. California has the country's strongest consumer protection laws, requiring insurance companies to base their rates on the latest loss data. And yes, CDI does not have a skeleton framework that the implementation process will be judged against, because each rate file is unique and is reviewed by the rules set under Prop 103, based on that insurance company's own updated loss data. For that reason, there is not going to be a standard discount from all companies. We want to see companies competing for your business. Consumers win when companies compete. And honestly, we don't want to put a ceiling on these incentives, because every company is required to offer wildfire safety incentive. You should have choices, and the department will be watching to make sure that it's fair, it's non-discriminatory, and it's compliant. A wildfire risk score is another thing. For the first time, the new regulation requires insurance companies to give you the wildfire score for your property, and they have to tell you how they created that score, what factors went into the score. The wildfire risk score or classification must be provided to you at the following times. When you apply for a new policy, within 15 days. Before you renew a policy, at least 45 days. Before you are non-renewed, at least 75 days. When you complete mitigation on your property and request a revised score, within 30 days. By creating a right of appeal, the regulation is giving power back to all of you, to the consumers. And if you're not satisfied with the response, again, the Department of Insurance is on your side to help. We have also received several questions from all over the states and from you, asking us if CAL FIRE severity maps be looked at by the insurance company to justify increasing rates. The answer to your concern is that we do not expect updating CAL FIRE maps to affect people's insurance for one simple reason. Insurance companies are already using their data, as I said earlier, to make insurance decisions. They are taking a detailed look at the risk to your property, which is not what CAL FIRE's map do, maps do. And also, California has a long history of wildfire hazard mapping for public education and safety. California has had fire hazard severity zone maps since 1985, providing the basis for governments to plan and implement local risk mitigation programs. Public education about where current wildfire hazard exists is essential to reducing the threat to local communities. When communities know and understand the danger, they can plan and prepare. We have to make people safer from wildfires. That is how we drive down the cost of insurance and give people more choices. Another concern raised regarding risk score is, will insurance company be inspecting the property for the risk score? And how does the right of appeal work? The regulation creates a right of appeal when you complete mitigation on your property and request a revised score within 30 days. And if you're not satisfied with the response, you can contact the Department of Insurance, and we will investigate. The regulation also requires insurance companies to notify the policyholder or applicant in writing of the right to appeal their filed fire risk score or other wildfire risk classification. And then there is, now the regulation also includes, and that will move us to our next slide, the regulation includes both residential and commercial insurance line. The property and individual buildings within HOA will need to be recognized for the mandatory property-level mitigation factors listed in the regulation, such as, I said, clearing of vegetation, class A fire-rated roof, and other factors specified in the regulation in order to qualify for a discount. HOA may also qualify for other optional wildfire mitigation effort discounts, and insurance company may choose to include in its rating plan. If an HOA is located within one of the listed community-level designation areas, they may also qualify for a community-level discount. So now let's talk about availability. Does the CDI project that insurance rate will continue to increase excessively in rural communities? Under this regulation, we expect to see more businesses, homeowners, and communities making investment in wildfire safety, greater community resilience, reduced losses for wildfires, more insurance coverage for mitigated properties. We have heard from thousands of Californians who want to see discounts for wildfire safety and greater transparency. It is important to know that CDI does not have the authority to force insurers to write coverage, as I said. But the regulation attacks the root cause of non-renewals, which is wildfire risk, and they will make Californians safer. And with accurate pricing of insurance, we expect to see more insurance options for people through a more competitive market. Now let's talk about Fair Plans additionally. Like, the department expects the Fair Plan to comply with the new regulation and offer discounts for wildfire risk mitigation and structure hardening. Reforming the Fair Plan is a top priority also for our department. The Fair Plan is backed by insurance companies, not by taxpayers. Commissioner Lara has taken actions to make the Fair Plan work better for people. The Fair Plan currently offers a 10% discount on policies in a participating Firewise community. Over the past three years, we have heard many concerns from consumers, businesses, and local leaders about the Fair Plan. As you all know, if you have one of these policies, it is limited coverage, and you have to buy a second policy at a higher cost to cover liabilities and liability and other things you had before. Here are some of the actions taken by the Commissioner. Commissioner ordered the Fair Plan to offer a comprehensive policy option. The Fair Plan sued the Department of Insurance and continues to fight in court to prevent consumers from having this choice. But we continue to keep winning, and we are going to stay on this until you have this option. The Fair Plan agreed to increase coverage limits to $3 million, from $1.5 million, where they had been stuck for decades, for the first time in last few decades. Also, just, you know, in last month, not last month, the month before that, we got the Fair Plan to agree to increase its commercial coverage limit to $20 million, and that's a big win. Now let's see, the state is investing $2.6 million for wildfire prevention and response. Most of these grants are assessed by local governments and community-based organizations like Firewise Councils. Our department wants you to take advantage of these grants. We could provide you with the letter of support for these grants if you need one. We encourage you to visit the California Grants Portal, a project by the California State Library, which can help you find all grants and loans offered on a competitive first-come basis by California state agencies. And it is on www.grants.ca.gov. The state and federal agencies responsible for managing fire prevention and mitigation grants are mainly CAL FIRE and FEMA. CAL FIRE, California Climate Investments Fire Prevention Program, four-year grants projects include defensible spaces and creation of community mitigation plans, hazardous fuel reduction, fire prevention education, fire prevention planning. And FEMA has $1 billion national competitive grants for fire management assistance grants, hazard mitigation grants program, and building resilient infrastructures and community. And then I was asked by Joanna, send me a thing that was, if there is a disaster, how can CDI help? So we are asking you, CDI's top priority is to protect consumers like you. One way we can do that is helping people prepare for disaster before it happens. So we are asking you, Lisa, next slide, please? So we are asking you to be proactive, okay? One way we can do that is, you know, so we can save lives, reduce losses, and recover more quickly. So natural catastrophe can happen, so we want to be proactive, as I said. We are here to guide you. You need to be prepared by having emergency kits ready and developing plans to follow before, during, and after an event. There are specific effective ways people can mitigate the financially devastating and life-threatening dangers posed by a catastrophe. First of all, start with your power. It's a difficult thing. I'm a four-generation immigrant, and I have to tell you, fine print are more important than bold prints. Do a home insurance tune-up. If you haven't in a while, review your policy and make sure you have enough coverage, and keep a copy of the policy safe, or upload it on cloud, or on any, we are email to you. Please make sure you have the right amount of coverage. You need to rebuild your home to the same standard it is now, or have the coverage to rebuild somewhere else. You should make sure to do this, especially if you have done any major home improvements or remodeling, which have increased the value of your home. The department is here to help. We understand that this is a difficult task, as you need to pay close attention to the wordings, including, like I said, fine print. Contact us, and we will review the policy with you. If you need assistance in your coverage, we will do that with you. Then again, home inventory. One thing we urge you to be prepared for any potential disaster by using your smartphone to perform a home inventory to create a record of your belongings. You can also scan important documents easily and remotely access after a disaster. So Senate Bill 872 in 2021 provided that wildfire survivors do not have to use a company's specific inventory form for lost contents, and can include like groupings, categories such as clothing, and shoes, and books, and food items, and DVDs, rather than having to list individual items. After each wildfire, and I mean it, after each wildfire, we hear from consumers who have lost items that are priceless to them, but they do not have a record of them. Then we also ask you to have your go-bag, and in your go-bags, you should have a copy of your policy, even if you have uploaded it on the cloud, your home inventory, and an envelope of some sort to keep receipts in. And once again, the policy and home inventory should also be saved, like I said, electronically. So in the event, an evacuation occurs, when you are out of the home and do not have the opportunity to grab your go-bag, it is saved electronically somewhere for you to access it. It is important to know that while your policy will show a coverage limit for personal property contents, it is exactly that. It's a limit. The insurer will not cut a check for the full limit amount. They will require an inventory to determine how much will be paid up to the coverage limit. If you ever have to file a wildfire claim, it is important to keep all receipts once you evacuate. Insurers will ask for receipts to determine how much will be paid on the additional living expenses, which we also call ALE, portion of a claim. This is true, this is true not only for total or partial loss, but also if you're evacuated due to a mandatory evacuation, even if you don't have a property damage claim, keep your receipts. We have a page on our website titled "Evacuation Checklist for Policyholders." We want you to go on that page and look at the checklist for that. If you are affected by a natural disaster, the department has some tips on our website to help you. These include like reviewing your policy, as I said, determine what is covered, and speak to your agent or insurance company's representative. Document all your conversation with them, and ask about policy limitations. Get at least one estimate or bid on the cost to repair your home to get a reasonable sense of actual cost as compared to your coverage limits. Before you hire a contractor, check their licensing status. With the Contractor State Licensing Board, CSLP, we also encourage you to review our electronic brochures entitled "Don't Get Scam After a Disaster." Okay? And please also check our website for disaster recovery centers and local assistance centers where department staff are available to talk to you in person about your insurance questions. And honestly, that's the best place to visit after a disaster, because they are there to help you, and there are other agencies at the disaster recovery centers, so it's kind of a one-stop. Currently, we have, you know, we also have, if you go on our website, when the winter storms were there, we had the disaster recovery centers. So always look at our disaster recovery centers on our website. And actually, this concludes my presentation, and I want to remind you that please take advantage of the opportunity. We are here to help you with any of your insurance questions. We have a dedicated staff of experts that can answer your specific question. We have live chat features, and if you're unable to pick up your call, our callback time is under two minutes, and I'm so proud of that. And our hotline number is on the screen that Lisa put it there, 800-927-4357. And if you forget, it's 800-927-help, or go to our website at insurance.ca.gov. Thank you so much, and we are open to questions.
Thank you so much for this presentation. You covered quite a lot. I do, I do have some questions that pertain particularly to Lake County. As you know, we have been through a lot of wildfires, but we also do a lot of proactive work. We apply for those grants. We have a lot going on. We have really engaged HOAs. I think we're over 16 Firewise communities now, yet we still have a high, high number of cancellations. And I'm wondering if your department tracks cancellations, because you did say that there would be more options as the market got competitive, but it looks like we're seeing insurers pull out of this area, and we have fewer options. And I know we have some people in the chambers that can speak to that. So I'm just, you know, that's what I'm wondering. Are you tracking cancellations? And are you also tracking the different insurers within our county so that we have an understanding of what the options are?
So, so all the insurance agents, insurance companies were supposed to, and they submit their wildfire framework plan by April 11th, and they have some, most of them have submitted, and we are reviewing that. So we will have more of an option, more of an answer in few months that, after reviewing it, that what is available out there and stuff. We do, we do get these complaints all the time about the cancellation, and it's there. Again, we cannot make them sell the property, we cannot make them sell the insurance, but if they are selling it, we can regulate it. So one of the things that Commissioner has done was the moratorium, that if you are in a disaster area, if you are in a disaster area, and Governor has declared the if you are in a disaster area and your, and Governor has declared the emergency, you have a year in your zip code that's given by the, you know, evaluated by insurance, Department of Insurance, you know, look at the area and, you know, give certain zip codes that will have a whole year where they cannot cancel the insurance. But I believe Lisa has put in our chat that you can look at the companies that are being canceled, and, you know, the data is available on our website.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as the moratorium was lifted, we saw an incredible number of cancellations.
I know.
And that is in these neighborhoods where all this proactive work is happening. So it's, you know, we're really getting frustrated here. So Lisa, do you have anything else to add that might be helpful?
Sure, thank you, thank you. So first, first to answer your questions about do we have data on cancellations? I did share the link, I'm not sure who all has access to it. I think it's just the panelists here. But if I'm looking at it for Lake County, the data is current as of 2021. We're still compiling 2022 data. And so we can see on here that in 2021, it does look like there were about 2,600 non-renewed policies that the consumer initiated, and a number of non-renewed policy insurers initiated were 738. And then there is a column on there which lets you know how many folks needed to resort to the California Fair Plan. So I did put that link in the chat, and you would just scroll to Lake County to kind of get that data. And then what I can offer, which kind of just piggybacks off of what Duriya said, our hope is that through this new regulation that it will incentivize the insurers to come back to, to come back to these areas and write insurance, given that communities as a whole are hardening and mitigating their homes. So, so that's kind of our, our hope. Unfortunately, as Duriya mentioned, we can't make them write in these areas, but we feel like there are many communities who haven't been hardened due to maybe money or whatnot, but they've been given grants, so they're hardening their areas. And so we hope that that is incentive for insurers to begin writing, thus helping our availability and affordability issues.
Okay, so when you come back in August, hopefully that's the time that you can come back and you'll have more data. Are you gonna have an understanding of the cancellations from 2022? Because that's when we saw a significant spike, and we're really gonna need that data.
Yeah, let me check in with our data analysis reporting unit and see where we are on compiling that 2022 data, and then we can circle back with you definitely.
Yeah, now it would be helpful to understand how many of our residents have to resort to the fair plan and what we can do to make some changes. Hopefully, we can do something because we're already doing so much. But I think that there are some other supervisors that have questions, Vice Chair Simon?
Yep. Good morning. I just want to follow up on the question of cancellations. You read two numbers. One was 2,600 initiated by consumers and then 700 by the insurance companies. I hope when you come back with the data that even in the consumer-initiated cancellations, that we do some type of analysis on what the increase was. Because most of the folks are out there working hard to try and get the insurance, but if your insurance comes back 200% higher than it was the year before, yeah, you're absolutely gonna make a decision of, I can't afford it. So yeah, it would be consumer-initiated, but not the intention, it's just can't afford it. So I'm hoping we're looking at that data too as we're moving forward, because I think that's really important. We've all heard stories of, you know, $3,000, you know, insurance costs per year going to $9,000 to $12,000. And, you know, so I hope that they dig into that data to really look at that as we're moving forward. And especially here in Lake County, you know, we've got a lot of, you know, seniors, elders, you know, that are on fixed incomes, that do own their properties, that have been, for years, that have been responsible. And now we're just hitting with challenges that they just can't afford. So, you know, I hope that data is really dived into that deeply so we can get a good understanding as we're moving forward, because it is a challenge. It's not only affecting the folks that are current homeowners, but any expansion for economic development and opportunities for people to relocate to Lake County, it's gonna become a challenge for each and every one of us. Our insurance, our real estate industry is being challenged by these issues. So these are all things I hope that the insurance commissioner is really gonna get that down-and-dirty data on what's, you know, what's really happening in the industry. Because right now, it is, it's, it's a, there is a big disconnect. And I know we keep talking about the fair plan, but the fair plan is just, you know, unaffordable to a lot of folks as they're moving through the process. So yeah, got a lot more questions or concerns. Also would like to, you know, just say, for Lake County, our HOAs, our Firewise communities, we've increased so much since 2015 as we've been moving forward at a county level. We have the CWPP, we have our Vegetation Abatement Ordinance and other things that are being put into place. Well, any of the counties, specifically the Lake County, we have also got a home hardening program, one of the three pilots in the state of California. Just making sure that as we're moving forward, that the communities that are doing the work can really get that, you know, the help moving forward. And I know you can't control discounts from the insurance companies, but taking all that into consideration as we're moving forward.
Definitely, we are taking all the notes and we are taking it with us. The question for the fixed income has come so many times, and that's one of the things Commissioner is looking into, that how people who are retirees and who are on fixed income. But unfortunately, this is one step, and I think that will be another step that we move forward. So we are, we want to, we, I don't think, I just want to correct that what I said, maybe I misspoke. We will not, we will have the answers of 22 filing from our, the department, but we would not know about the safer-from-wildfires things maybe until the end of the year. We will not have the answers in August. And that's why when I was asked to come this month or next month, I was like, let me start the process now and join you guys. And once we have more information, we'll keep on posting you, updating you at that. And because of that coming today also helped us to look at Lake County closer and, you know, to know more about your concern and things. So now it's much more of a thing where we are taking it that Lake County is so ready with their HOA, with their, all the hardening efforts and all that part. So we are taking that thing and looking, I mean, it's already there, but it just brings it more zooms, zooms, zoom us the problem and stuff more on that part. And also keep this connection with you, that you can reach out to us for any question and concern. If you will send me any question and concern also, we do try to get the answer as fast as you can for you also. So I want you to know that part too.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. So the regulation was adopted last September, it looks like. But it's optional. So, and so those insurers that have dived into this, I don't really know what the incentive is in for them. So first question, how many insurers have already gone down this path, started developing their own risk models and submitted them to you for review?
So we were, we, we are expecting, we haven't started reviewing, we have reviewing, we are in the process of reviewing it, but our expectation was that all the insurance companies who will be writing in the area need to submit that. So they, they were all required to submit their rate filings. So that's one of the questions to answer you. We don't know how it looks like until we review it and we come up with the thing that, you know, what it is. But they were all required to, you know, what discounts they will do and how will they do that part. And also, like I said, risk score and transparency, and also those are the things they have to, you know, submit, how they will handle that part. Lisa, do you want to chime in on that, please?
Well, I, I think they have a very challenge, I can't see the incentive for any insurer to do this. If only by the complexity of the modeling they're gonna have to do. So I'm looking at some of the measures they, if they do this, what they would be required to look at. And part of it is very site-specific, right around the home. There's a little mixed messaging. You want to clear combustible objects five feet from the building. CAL FIRE says, hey, get 100 feet cleared from the building and stuff like that. So there's a mismatch in messaging there that, you know, you want to give credit or discounts for a lesser amount of clearing. But then there's other optional factors that insurers can look at too that might actually tilt the scales, regardless of any site-specific improvements, if they're looking at regional fuel loads, if they're looking at slopes, if they're looking at 4290 fire road access, things like that. Those may be the bigger roadblocks on a regional basis. You know, never mind any site-specific hardening if you have a hardened home, but you're still way out in the sticks in a, in a very fire-prone area. I'm having a hard time figuring out what an individual insurer would do with this. And there's nothing in the regulation that would standardize. So when these insurers start popping up their risk models and giving you scores, I don't know. Is AAA gonna score me? One thing, State Farm's gonna score something else, and there's no requirement for standardization. So it, you know, they can be transparent with their risk modeling, but I don't know that anybody would necessarily understand what they're trying to do. And I guess we just have to wait to see what's being popped up because we, we haven't seen any of these yet, right?
Yes, we have to see what they have submitted, but at the same time, we, as I said in my presentation also, there is no way to uniform, you have the uniformity. Every insurance company, the way they are doing their business, they will have their own level of discount. Some will do the both, community discount and individual discount, some will do this and that. Like you mentioned, the slopes and other things, those are already taken into account. So this, this safer-from-wildfire are the regulations for other discounts, but the, the model that you're saying that insurance companies are already using to use for, for the risk score. So, so those are the, those are the, some of the requirements or some of the, you know, things that they are already using to define the risk score and, you know, and, and for the rate, rate, insurance rate or premium. So, so it will not be a uniform anyway. We are encouraging people to do two things, harden their home. And if they are with the insurers, talk to their insurance companies and ask them, what have they filed? What are they looking? What will be the discount? And if they are thinking of it, what they prioritize that you do first, you know? We want you to start with easy things also, but it looks like Lake County is pretty much ready for all the, you know, they have kind of, you all have worked towards all the hardening things. But, so that's, that's my thing. Lisa, you want to chime in on this one?
I don't think I really have anything to add, other than definitely in agreement with the person that was just speaking because that is true, there isn't any sort of standardization in terms of, we don't even know what the discounts will look like, right? I think you used AAA as an example. We don't know yet if they will offer 15% discount and then maybe Company B will offer more, more of a discount. Our hope is that this regulation encourages competition to benefit consumers, which might be some more work on your part initially as these grading plans begin to get approved. We would encourage you to, you know, check different companies to see which ones a better fit for your home and location. So I can kind of offer that, that as well. But as Duriya said, we are taking notes to your questions today, and we'll definitely share with, with our executive team. And we have a whole wildfire and readiness, preparedness team. We can definitely and will definitely share all of the concerns heard today with them.
Well, and I'll just add, the, the five feet from the house is part of zone zero, CAL FIRE's zone zero. And CAL FIRE does have zone zero, zone one, zone two, zone three. And there are different standards for each of those zones and how close they are to the house. That's what that comes from. Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you. Yes, actually, there was a lot of discussion about this in one of my town halls recently. And I just wanted to ask, and this may have been covered, but I just want to reiterate this. So does a homeowner need to obtain the insurance carrier that's listed on the discount list that you provided us? Because many are saying that their, their rates are increasing. When they want to switch to another one, they, no one will touch them. So they're either forced to stay with the group that they're insured by or, or just not have it because they, they can't switch.
So the list that I shared in the chat, Supervisor, is a list of insurers currently giving discounts. It's important to remember that to our, well, I guess I can not even say to our knowledge, there is no one giving discounts per this regulation yet. We just received all of those rate filings April 12-ish, and so we're reviewing those and approving them as we get to them. So that list that I shared in the link is insurers already giving discounts. And there is a column on there that shows dates too, just to kind of give you an example. Some have been giving discounts for, for many years for this work. What the, what the regulation does though is it requires all insurers who rate by a wildfire risk model to provide a discount. Those insurance companies are not listed on that link yet. So maybe I shared that link prematurely because, again, it's not the insurers listed for this regulation yet.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When do we expect the new rates and the new discounts? If, if they've just been submitted to you and you're reviewing them, and then you're going to approve them going forward at different times? You know, if someone has their policy coming up for renewal in the next 30 days or 60 days, you know, what do we tell them about, you know, new rates and new discounts?
I think that's a great question, and we are, you know, we can't, we don't have an exact date. These will roll out, could roll out all at different times. But we are hoping that all rates are in effect by the end of the year or at least like quarter four. So October, November, December.
Okay. Did you have something else?
I also want to add to that, that we, like I said in the presentation also, that each insurance policy is, is very unique. So if you think, if people are, you know, going through that, we still want to encourage you to call our department, talk to our experts, and they're very good at going through and reviewing the policy. And also talk to your insurance company and insurance agent that, you know, what it is, and just, just be in contact so we, you, you, you can make an educated decision.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was it. The reason why I mentioned that as well is because there was insurance agent at the last meeting that we had. Either they're not privy to this, because I didn't hear the discussion about this, but they had mentioned that Firewise Communities and Home Hardening doesn't really help. And, yeah, they were saying that, so.
So I, I just want to follow up on that point. If someone receives their renewal and it's significantly higher and they want to appeal, and you've got 30 days or two weeks or, you know, to go back and forth, how do you maintain your coverage if you're, if you, you know, if you've only have a short period of time to either accept the, the new terms, appeal, or find a new carrier? Is there a grace period or, you know, because that seems really problematic to me? Yes? Okay.
Thank you for your question, and I don't know that I have an answer for that question right now, but we will certainly, Duriya and I will go back to the team and see what it is that will be happening with that. I suspect, to a degree, it may be individual as well by insurers, but if we could just have maybe the rest of today to find that answer out, we can circle back with you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. It would be wonderful if all the questions that are brought up today could be answered in a single document, and then we could do a release with that information. So I'm gonna open it up to the public. I know we've got some people in the chambers that have specific questions. And again, this is really for your benefit so you can understand what's happening in real time here on the ground. So I'm gonna open it up and see who in the chambers would like to come up. You can state your name and have three minutes.
Sorry, short. Thank you very much. My name is Kathy Andre, and I represent the My name is Kathy Andre, and I represent the Conocti Fire Safe Council as well as the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association. I have the privilege of serving as president for both of these organizations, and I'm here with fellow board members of the Conocti Fire Safe Council today. I cannot tell you at this moment how incredibly frustrated I am, especially listening to the presentation today, and I really appreciate you being here and giving us the opportunity to hear what's going on, but I'd like to share with you what's going on from our perspective. One, right now, it's not just wildfire threatening to destroy our communities, it's fire insurance. You're pricing us out of where we live. We cannot afford it. You are telling us to make sure we review our policy and we have the appropriate coverage. We can't afford the appropriate coverage. We, we can't afford the bare minimum, and we cannot even afford the California unfair plan. Our homeowners, we deal with this every single day with our homeowners. There's, I can't believe that the whole, you think there's 700 people that got canceled by fire, by insurance companies? There's thousands, thousands of people who have not been renewed or who have not, or who have been canceled by insurance companies. Just in this area alone, I can't even fathom the rest of the numbers in the rest of the state. Do you, you provide the list of insurance companies providing incentives for homeowners? I called every single insurance company on that list, and not one agent that I spoke to knew of one discount that their insurance company was offering. Do you test these insurance companies? Do you have oversight? And, and do you call these insurance companies? Because there's a huge disconnect between the corporate level of these insurance companies and what they think they're offering, and the agents that have no idea what they're offering. And the people who get screwed are the homeowners in these communities. Our homeowners and our Fire Safe Council, we represent four firewise communities in our area, and a fifth one is being formed. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in fire mitigation every single year. We do education programs on how to evacuate. We put in fire breaks. We have so many different programs going on, and do you know what the incentive is we get from the insurance company? Here's the incentive. We'll cancel your insurance if we don't, if you don't do the work that we're telling you to do. That's it. That's our big incentive.
Kathy, your time's up. You're welcome to come back if you'd like.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate you being receptive to these comments. And I would really like to thank the Board of Supervisors who have championed these efforts on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else in the chambers like to come up?
Good morning. My name is Winkelman from Cobb Mountain.
Your first name?
Thank you very much.
Your first name?
Case.
Case, for the record, thanks.
Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a very important issue right now, especially in my neighborhood. I'm up in the Fox Drive area, and half of my neighbors been canceled. And as of last year, many of them had to go even as far as Lloyds of London to get insurance and paying anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000 a year. Right now, if you call any insurance company and you give them the zip code 95426, they say automatically, "Thank you, but no, we won't insure you because of the fire zone area." Lucky myself, I've been with one insurance agent and they did, after cancellation, they did pick me up again and renew me, but my policy has gone from 1,800 now to 4,200. If I get canceled again and it goes up to 10,000 or 12,000, I can't afford to stay there. I'm retired on a fixed income, and between everything else, you know, cost going up on everything else, there was no way I could survive over there. So I think there are many more people canceled than what they really know. But again, you answered a lot of my questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Case. Come on up.
My name's Tim Holmes. I'm building a house on Lockmore Monroe. I made a few notes of kind of entering in the process of getting insurance, and I lived in Santa Rosa, I had an agent there. Go ahead, homeowner's insurance and then renters' insurance at different times, State Farm for probably 30-plus years. She's, I had a renters' policy with her. She said, "Keep that policy because State Farms offer exemptions if you have a renters' policy." So I said, "Okay, let's go for the exemption," and they said, "No, can't do it up there." And then, so she resubmitted a, an appeal, and they said, "No," again, because something about, I was clearing my own land and I wasn't a part of a mass clearing, which didn't make much sense to me, and that I was, the coverage had gone up 25%, over 25%. It was a renters' policy, now I had a homeowner's policy. So anyway, that was interesting. And then I asked her if I could subsequently get insurance for losses not covered by wildfires. I mean, in California, you can't get flood, you get flood insurance separately, you get earthquakes separately. Seems like we almost have to get separate wildfire. I mean, I'd like to, like to have my house covered comprehensively, but if I can't afford fire insurance, I'd like to have something, you know? I also called a local State Farm agent and asked if they did difference in coverage policies just in case I had to go fair. He said, "No." He said, "State Farm's working on it, but its agency would be glad to offer it, but it's not available now." Well, on the insurance.gov website, it says State Farm is offering this type of policy. So the policy, the website might want to be updated. AAA was offering insurance in this area about six months ago because I had a friend that called them, but only for stick build. Now they do CAL FIRE, and now they do CAL FIRE companion plans, but it sounds like companies decide to blackball this area. No one will give anything but a CAL FIRE plan here, at least in the area I'm in. And like Santa Rosa had a large wildfire and Fountain Grove was burned down. Is Fountain Grove blackballed? I doubt it, you know? So anyway, I finally got ahold of AAA and they seem to be willing to at least talk to me and give me a companion CAL FIRE, CAL, like someone said, FAIR plan, I hope so. But there's nothing definite yet. And anyway, so if, if it's possible, there's some kind of way they can say insurers can give something without wildfire, that'd be at least something. If the, if the house was burgled or someone, something, it'd be, you know, something because I'm making sure that my house is very fire safe, cleared all over the place. And anyway.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to come up?
I have a clarifying question from that speaker. Did he say that was State Farm that told him they do not sell DIC policies?
Yes, that was State Farm.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Seiler from the Lake, the Conocti Fire Safe Council. Besides all of the other concerns that have been brought up, one big frustration, I think, is the lack of standardization of mitigation. Many, many, many people mitigate, are non-renewed, go to another insurance company and are told that those mitigations, they won't cover them. So you had mentioned at one point that the Insurance Commission seems to be going down an avenue of encouraging insurance companies to be competitive. That doesn't really help people. There should be a homogenization of mitigations. If you do certain ones, you should, across the board, have a reduced income, I mean, starting from the very top, you know, with a metal roof and concrete siding and so forth. Is the Insurance Commission planning on trying to do something like that if people are mitigating and non-renewed and the mitigations that they've already spent thousands and thousands of dollars on are not recognized by another company? Seems to me that should be a role of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, come on up. Okay, come on up. It's, you can, whatever you want.
I don't want to be on the phone, I don't want to be on with them.
Oh, okay. It's a public record if you want to.
I can get myself in trouble with my company.
Okay. Okay. You can send us an email or we can talk offline. Okay. Sure, whatever you feel like. Take your shirt off. You want a sticker?
Good morning, I'm Pat Lambert. I'm a local insurance agent. I, I believe what you guys are doing is posturing a little bit here politically. I, I'm having a hard time hearing what I'm hearing. You guys have done nothing to help the situation. I, I work for a company, and we're seeing everywhere the market is getting harder and harder. You guys sit here and talk about being competitive. Nobody can be competitive right now because they're losing their shorts. When the, when the local companies in the state of California are losing billions and billions of dollars, our system is broken, and you guys have done nothing to help fix it. You look at states like Colorado who are profitable in this line of business, but California is not. Myself, my own community, everybody is getting hurt, and there's nothing the state of California has done to fix that. So I have a hard time because I'm here for my, my customers, my clients, my community. I may work for an insurance company, but they don't come first, our, our community comes first. And so we've got problems, and I don't know what you guys can do to fix it, but, but right now what you're doing is nothing other than talk. And we talk about the hardening, we talk about these discounts. I don't even think you guys have a clue what's going on. You're talking about April, my, my company started giving discounts earlier this year. So there are companies that are giving these discounts that we've been told were approved by the Department of Insurance. And we can throw those discounts in there, but they're not the biggest discounts in the world either. There are, some are very hard to get, some are limited, they don't make a difference. When you've got people's policies going up, 100, 150, 200%, the meager little discounts you're talking that you're getting for these things, some of them don't even outweigh the cost of, of doing the work that you have to do. So we've got issues, and you guys need to get to work and figure this out. Our system is broken, and it's, and just so you know, it's not only just the home insurance now, it's also auto. Nothing's been said in here about this, but you know, State Farm, farmers have all gone to 25-day wait periods just to insure an auto policy. GEICO stopped writing policies over the phone. Costco shut down all their personalized insurance in California. These are things that are going on, it's not in the news, the department's not talking about it. It's, it's a big issue in California, and the way we're going, you're not going to be able to get anything in the state. You guys are making it impossible, and we hear this all day long. It, it's the state of California, it's the regulators, it's the Insurance Commissioner. So there's, there's something wrong. You guys have broken our system along with the insurance companies, and it needs to get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else in the chambers before we move to the Zoom room? Okay, we have one hand up in Zoom, Elliot Hurwitz. Elliot, you can unmute and state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, I'm Elliot Hurwitz. I live up in the Cobb Mountain area, and amen to everything everybody has said. The only thing I'd like to add is that, need to think about this in terms of not just the existing homeowners, but particularly for communities like ours which have been devastated by destructive wildfire, the rebuild process is being made, you know, to just, you know, add an additional burden to that. Our home burned down eight years ago. We had to give up doing a stick-built home after the COVID kind of price explosions and that. Now we're finally, really literally this week, on the verge of trying to get a manufactured home on our lot, and the prospect of not being able to get a, an affordable policy while I'm actually shopping for a mortgage is terrifying. You know, we've already, you know, we, you know, we've put in, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'll tell you, people up here, we are experts on mitigation. For the last eight years in particular, since our fire, you know, we've got, not, we've already talked about the firewise communities, but I'll tell you, every one of my neighbors and, and we have, you know, we have local fire drills, we're in communication, we have, you know, as I said, we are truly experts in this. And I really agree about this, this topic of actually having to set statewide standards. It's not, it's not rocket science. Yeah, it's a certain amount of complication, slope, vegetation, et cetera, but that's, you know, it's not unsolvable. And that California needs to set uniform standards and require insurance companies to provide discounts for, for those homeowners who meet those standards. And I'll tell you, you do that, and not only will we see, begin to see, you know, the insurance problem begin to solve, but that will actually incentivize, you know, much more aggressive homeowner compliance with, with the best practices. We know what they are, and so I think it really, this, this issue of who are we doing this for, I don't think it's a matter of, of just having to create a quote-unquote "competitive market" for the insurance companies. No, this is really something that goes to core state policy in terms of being able to, I mean, the whole issue of the quote-unquote "California housing crisis," we're attacking it from every, you know, I think there were 50 bills in the legislature this year trying to look at housing crisis, but if you can't rebuild in a fire-destroyed area, that is just taking a whole segment of the, of the housing market off the table. So I really encourage you to take back to your, you know, bosses, the message that the California Insurance Commission needs to do a much, a much more in-depth and proactive job in terms of, of creating an insur, a usable insurance market in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. I'm not seeing any other hands up. Anyone else in the chambers? Take your turn? Okay. Elliot, your hands back up? No, okay. So I will bring you back to the board. We, we had a, a few comments about manufactured homes, and the reality is, is that many people in our county can only afford a manufactured home for a rebuild or for whatever reason. This is a big source of our housing stock, and it will continue to be that, and we need to make sure that they're going to be insured along with stick-built homes. And it's really difficult to get a manufactured home insured as we've heard today. So that needs to be considered when you're looking at what's happening in our county. And I need to know, if this has been considered or can be considered, how can you cap increases? In what industry, in what market can a, a company be allowed to increase by 200% or more? You know, that is, seems unacceptable and seems like something that should be, should be monitored. And the other thing is, when you come back and we've got the data to look at the cancellations that have happened in the last couple of years, really need to analyze the percentage of FAIR plan policies that we have in our county, because if we only have FAIR plan in our county and no one else has a standard plan, then that is a huge problem. So those are some of my questions that I want looked at. I'm going to open it up for the rest of the members to speak. Supervisor Green, what are your priorities out? You'd like to hear back when we have another visit?
One thing, and I thank you again for the department and for the comments from the people in the audience. One thing I'd like to hear about is, just like when we were talking about the fire hazard maps, CAL FIRE, their methodology, and I know the board majority took, took exception with that, the methodologies that are going to be used by these insurers are going to be arguably even more complicated than, than the broader mapping tools used by CAL FIRE because they're trying to analyze risk versus hazard, so it does get very site-specific, and I can't imagine that there would be one universal standard that should apply statewide because it should include things like regional fuel loads and slope and stuff like that. One thing I would like to see when we come back is not just, you know, what paltry back is not just, uh, you know, what paltry list of insurers is actually offering anything using these new regulations, but, uh, whether there's any incentive in there. I think the larger part of this equation by far is how many hundreds of millions of dollars did those same insurance companies pay out in wildfire claims in this county over the last decade? It's a chunk. Um, so, uh, not here to, uh, speak on behalf of the insurance industry. That's not going to be a popular thing today, but they're businesses. They answer to their shareholders. Um, they're not going to pour money down the drain for areas that they rightly or wrongly perceive as being too dangerous to write policies in. So if we don't like the CalFire map, if we don't like these regulations that have been adopted because we don't think they go far enough, then what's the next step? But I can see, speaking devil's argument again, why insurer would be reluctant to say, "Oh, this whole region burned down. Now we're building maybe some manufactured homes, but maybe also some stick built homes." Uh, you know, McMansions on hilltops in heavily forested areas. So we're doubling down on maybe things that made good sense several decades ago, but in, in era of climate change, pervasive tree mortality and the risks that we know more about today, um, I'd like to hear from some insurance companies. You know, what do they see in terms of the risk models here in the county? Why are they, uh, doing non-renewals here? And I know you can't force them to sell insurance. I know you can't also force them to show up to a Board of Supervisors hearing. Um, but I think they're probably the biggest, uh, part of this puzzle. And other than just yelling at them and saying these regulations aren't sufficient to solve the problem, uh, we do need to go back as the state, as, as the county and as a department there and say, "This is good as far as it goes, but we don't think it goes anywhere close enough to solving," like you've heard, just hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of non-renewals going on right now. And all we have is some slim hope that some insurers will step up and give a little weensy discount in some site-specific areas, uh, but maybe some other areas, zip codes, they just won't insure at all. Uh, so I'm a little still mystified where their heads are at. I know you don't have answers for them, um, but that's what I'd like to see when we come back. I'd like to hear from an insurance company or two or three what's going on, boots on the ground here.
Do you have anything?
You know, once again, thank you for coming today. So obviously a very, um, complicated issue as we move forward. Uh, when we come back in August, and I think that's what we're talking about.
It's not going to be August.
Okay, at the end of the year?
Yes.
Uh, you, you know, as we continue the, the conversation of, you know, how we move forward, we heard it today. Um, you know, it is called the California Fair Plan, but, um, you know, you hear it more often than the unfair plan. And it looks like during this transition, um, here in Lake County, uh, that, that may be one of the options that people are forced to. So looking at how we can, you know, or the commissioner can, you know, help make that competitive and comprehensive, I think is a, is a real focus. You say you can't force the industry to do things, but there are things that the commissioner can do to hopefully help move that forward. Um, as we come back, we just need the data. I really think that data is skewed. Uh, we heard that today. I think there are thousands of folks and I really would like to see that data on initiated from the consumer or from the insurance company. Because as we heard today at the, um, you know, here at the diocese, you know, a lot of folks, when you're faced from going from 3,000 to 12,000, you've just got to make that decision on how you're moving forward to survive in the home that you've had, uh, for many years in the family or potentially rebuilding. Um, but we're doing the work here locally in Lake County and we want to continue that conversation of how we help our homeowners move through these difficult times. So, yeah, there's no easy answers, but more data and more information and really understanding the boots on the ground and what's happening here locally to Lake County. I know you guys are charged with the entire state, but we need to focus directly on Lake County's hard work that it's done over the past eight years.
Thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, my fellow supervisors have covered a lot already. I think in, maybe this was covered as well when it comes to Fair or anything that has to do with working with these insurance companies. But, um, when imposing some of these initiatives, I think it's key to consider the fact that our counties that are rural have a different situation than some of the urban onsets. Um, so I'm not sure how you can implement that. I know some of our, uh, some of our collaborative groups probably emphasize that at the, at the state level. So, um, I just highly encourage, um, the Insurance Commissioner to look at that in a different aspect. Um, it's not a, what do they call it, cookie cutter for all the counties. Um, we can't afford what LA does, LA County or Orange County or any of them who are burdened by fires as well. Um, and we have, we don't have as much resources as these other counties. So just wanted to highlight that if that hasn't already been covered.
Thank you. And it's just important to look at this holistically as an economic issue for our county. A lot of our residents are suffering. And if we, as we look at growth and how we further develop, which we know when you further develop and you develop that infrastructure, the risk of wildfire goes down. And so we can't be stuck in this mode where we can't be building because it's too cost prohibitive. So these are all the things that we'd like you to consider, work on, uh, bringing us back, um, some of the questions that have been asked today so we can get those out to our residents. And then we really look forward to the next time that you're going to come. Maybe it's the fall? Does fall sound good? Okay, good. All right. So thank you so much for coming and having this conversation with us, sharing your work, hearing, um, some of the, the specific pain points that we're dealing with in this rural county. Um, I, we've, I feel like you've heard us today and I'm looking forward to the responses and, um, and keeping this conversation going. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.